I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have one request for a published document. There's that red button near that microphone at the podium. If you would please press that button and, uh... Yes.
Can you hear me?
No, I can't.
I don't know. Can you hear me now?
No, I can't.
One, two, three.
Hello? No, just the one over there by you over there. Testing. Would you like to sit down and clarify? My seat.
One, two, three.
Test. Hello? Okay, I'll just talk loud.
Does that one work yet?
Andrew's mic.
Hello?
That one worked. Sorry. All this happened for you to sit there talking.
It's meant to get out, it'll get out.
Hello? This is a community service student proposal. It's something that came to me and I feel like that it would be nice to share. I think that it would be beneficial to our students if a community-oriented type project were a requirement for each individual student. As it stands now, I'm aware that there are many wonderful community-based programs within our schools that offer students some choices to participate in. Many students are a part of them and do really well academically and socially and tend to have a great outlook on their futures. But not every student seeks these opportunities out on their own. I think that if each student were required to take part in a community-based project once or twice a week for a couple of months, say, two or three months, I think it would make a great impact on their lives in no small way. Other schools have tried this and have had great achievements. Some kids come from broken homes with no moral support and no one praising or pushing them forward. Some have found their way into drugs and into destructive behaviors. Others are wrapped up in some sort of depressive state of mind searching for something hopeful. I think being a part of a community service in some way, helping, say, the elderly or maybe young children, I think that if each student took a part in that, they would have more self sense of accomplishment, that there would be no child left behind, no student left behind in these ages and sophomore all the way, freshman all the way up to, um... to senior. I think that they would become, um... good citizens as they grew up. I believe that having a chance to be a part of something outside of themselves will allow each and every adult a chance to feel a great sense of accomplishment and they will carry that with them indefinitely and become a good part of our community. It will give them a chance for a better future, for a better community, and to help bring down the crime rates in schools. I do have many community outreach ideas and I am willing to help out in any way that I can to be a part of this if my participation is desired.
No, I'm not working here, but... Maybe I'm not, but, um... No, never mind. My voice is too loud.
You don't need to go ahead.
I think it's a great idea. I think we should give it to Mrs. Santa and, um... Talk with her and she can work on it and see if it's reasonable and what we can do about it. How did... I don't know how the rest of you feel. We...
Did you have grade levels that you were proposing this for?
Freshmen through senior. It doesn't matter when it takes place. It could take place in the freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior years. Just for them to have that initial, um... Be a part of the community, get their thoughts off of themselves. Stop, stop the... Because you have different groups. You know, some people don't fit in. They don't feel like they fit in. Um... The emo, I'm not sure if it's still called emo, but they... Some kids all dress in black and they get a part of different groups and they're all seeking to be a part of something. They don't know what it is, so they, they seek outside sources and sometimes it's pretty disruptive behaviors that they get into. I'm willing to work with, with the program. I have a few ideas. I have Silver Creek, St. Elizabeth's Manor, Franklin Court. I watched a program on PBS, um... Read on PBS and it said... It was about children, well, maybe, I think, freshmen through senior year working with the elderly population. The elderly have many stories to offer to the younger generation. There's the Grange, that's a possibility. Um... I have quite a few ideas that I could help out and try to organize.
We, um... We tried this once before and I don't know why it didn't work. But I do remember, it was a while ago, we talked about community service being a part of graduation requirement. Um... And we, we set it up as numbers of hours. But, um... I'm thinking with the... If we have the new person coordinating school to career, that that may be a little something else that could be... We can work with it. Let's see if we can do it this time. We didn't make it last time, but maybe we can make it this time.
Yeah, there are a lot of different options. Sometimes community service is embedded into a course. Um... A marine biology class would volunteer to go out and do water testing and they keep that up on a regular basis, so it's embedded into the course. Um... There are other options too that we can look into. And I know of a few high schools that do have that as a requirement. So, thank you for bringing that suggestion to us. And, um... Karen can give you my email if you wanted to send me an email and I can get back to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time.
Yeah, thank you for taking the time to come here.
The name of the child?
I did.
And she's, uh... She'll follow through, correct? Thank you. Thank you. Oh, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh... With Ryan's point, we didn't actually do it. I remember we had a discussion. At the end of the discussion, we decided not to do it, so it never actually happened. Like, that's my recollection of it. I would have a couple of requests, but if we could have that statement that was written, is that going to be part of the minutes? Is it going to be concealed? Yes, it is. That's going to be part of the written minutes? Okay. I would also ask that if we were getting, uh... As this process goes on, to get a specific proposal in front of us to the committee and have a discussion regarding the specific proposal.
That has to come from the high school.
Or if we choose to go lower for that. Middle schoolers can't just go low.
We have a little...
Yeah, nothing. I don't know if you've got this on. This doesn't work.
Could be on one of them.
Yeah, I, I believe that everything from beyond here and down is dead.
Well, I'm not dead. So, I have a red light.
No, you can get a red light, but there's no sound. There's no sound. So, great, if we move on to, to the rest of our, our next thing on our agenda, it's, it's, um... Presentation that, that, uh... That Pauline is supposed to be doing.
It's warming up.
Yeah, and it is warming up, I can see it. It deals with, uh... With some of the standards that we have to, uh... Deal with and, and make sure we comply with for our reporting systems, correct?
Correct.
So, if we can ask Pauline to take over and, and, uh... Go forward in this presentation.
Pauline, does this presentation cover $123,000 or two thousand and eighty?
It does not, I'm sorry. Right, I will attempt to explain GASP54 and its impact on our fund balance report. I'll just wait a minute for that to come up. Don't it? She is not. She's awesome.
Okay.
I'm sorry, something was holding up the speakers. Clumsy, not bad.
I'm so sorry, I don't know what to do here.
Well, let's see if I can advan... Yeah, I can advance.
Well, that's advancing it, but it's showing you the...
Oh. My notes.
Any tricks from the audience? Second screen only? But it still shouldn't show you that. I know. I know, wait, wait. Let me, let me just start it again. One, second.
We'll just give it one more minute. If not, you've got it.
It's still on.
That looks good.
So now the clicker's not working.
All right. Well, that worked. But my clicker's not working yet?
No.
What'd you do?
I didn't do anything. Okay.
I can sit here and click for you.
If you don't mind, that would be awesome.
Let me try. I don't know if it's going to cooperate.
Ready? You can advance.
No, we're not ready. We're going to go back?
Well, I won't keep you any longer. We'll just start with the background. You already know that education, all branches of government for that matter, enjoys their alphabet soup. Well, accountants would know different. We just like to add numbers to ours because we can. GASP is the Government Accounting Standards Board, which issues numbered statements from time to time to clarify or sometimes reconcile GAFR, the Government Accounting Auditting and Financial Reporting Blue Book, and GAAP, which is the Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. They off... They issue GASP Statement 54 effective fiscal year ended June 30 of 2011. The object of today's discussion is to provide an update on GASP Statement 54 so that you can have an understanding of the restrictions on our fund balance. I hope to dispel some of the misconceptions about fund balance within the different fund types in the district. Fund balance, net worth, owner's equity. It basically is the difference between assets and liabilities. There was definitely a need for change. Confusion about the terminology, especially regarding availability for appropriation, was definitely warranted for government agencies. The fund balance classifications are... There are five components: non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. The amount of a fund balance that cannot be spent because it is either not in a spendable form or there is a legal or contractual requirement for the fund to remain intact is non-spendable fund balance. Examples of that would be prepaid expenses, inventory, fixed assets, endowment principles, et cetera. The restricted fund balance is the amount of a fund balance that can only be spent on specific expenses due to constraints on the spending because of legal restrictions, outside party creditors, grant award, donor requirements. It is worth noting that only those maintenance projects paid from capital projects fund are eligible for housing aid reimbursement per ride. The committed fund balance is the amount of a fund balance that includes the portion of the spendable fund balance but has constraints on the spending that the regional school committee or regional voters at a joint finance meeting has imposed upon itself by a formal action of the school committee. This constraint must be imposed prior to the fiscal year end, but specific amounts may be determined at a later date, such as the capital projects and the 2% reserve for cash flow and the 2% reserve for emergencies. The assigned fund balance is amounts intended... The amount of the fund balance that is included in the portion of the spendable fund balance that reflects funds intended to be used by the district for specific purposes assigned by informational operation planning. The assigned fund balance represents a plan for spending the amount but is not restricted or committed. The authority to assign the fund balance is designated to the Director of Administration and Finance. The difference between committed and assigned, both constrained to be used for specific purposes by actions taken by the government itself, i.e. the school committee. Assignment is not required to be made by the government's highest level of decision-making of authority. In fact, School Committee Policy, DIC, gives that authority to the Director of Administration and Finance. The same action is not required to remove or modify an assignment. Each can change the other's decision. So, if the Director of Administration assigns, the school committee can reassign. If the school committee assigns, the Director of Administration, although not encouraged, can reassign as well. The unassigned fund balance... Oops, sorry. The unassigned fund balance, the amount of a fund balance that is in the general fund and includes all spendable amounts that are not otherwise contained in the classifications listed and therefore not subject to any constraints of intended use. Unassigned amounts are available for any purpose. These are the current resources available for which there are not any external or self-imposed limitations or set spending plan. I'm going to give you a quick definition of the governmental fund type definitions. The general fund. All financial resources except those required... I'm sorry. It used to be all the financial resources except those required to be accounted for in another fund. It is now, as you can read, the general fund is used to account for all financial resources not accounted for and reported in another fund. So, you say, what's the difference? Well, one starts out with it being restricted and the way it is now, it's, it's everything that's not restricted or, or special revenue funds. One started out a general fund, one ends up a general fund. The special revenue funds, by Statement 54 definition, is up on the board there. Special revenue funds used to account for the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are legally restricted to expenditures for those specific purposes. Now, it says the special revenue funds are either restricted or committed to the expenditure for specific purposes other than debt service or capital projects. Capital projects, by Statement 54 definition, are restricted, committed, or assigned to the expenditure for capital outlays, including the acquisition or construction of capital facilities and other capital assets. Per RIDE regulations, only those projects that have been approved by RIDE and paid for from either bonding or capital funds project, capital projects fund, are eligible for reimbursement. Okay. From page 46 of our financials, this is what our fund balance looks like by GAAP, by GASP 54 statement. So, our non-spendable fund balance, those are, um... Either fixed assets or cash that can't be spent. Thirty-five thousand. Our non-major special revenue funds is eight hundred and seventy thousand. Our capital projects is forty-three million. That makes up our 5.2 million of restricted fund balance.
Pauline? Yeah. The capital projects is 4.3 million.
4.3 million as of June 30 of 2016.
I'm only correcting you because I think you said 43 billion.
Oh, 4.3 million, okay, sorry. So now, take a breath. Okay, so the non-spendable was 35,000. Non-major special revenue funds was 870,000. Capital projects was 4.3 million. Equals 5.2 million of our restricted. Our general fund commitment to capital projects was 119,000. Our required reserve of 2% and 2% equals 2.1 million and that's the total of our 2.2 million in committed fund balance. Eight hundred, 800,000 for our OPEB liability is assigned to fund, excuse me, to fiscal year 17, 18, and 19 and that makes up our assigned fund balance of 2.4 million and we have no unassigned dollars in general fund or any fund for that matter. Questions?
Pauline, we never keep money just in unassigned, um...
That is correct, we do not.
Yeah, I mean, just because some people ask that question. We do not have that. All our money is accounted for. We don't have a, a general fund like the legislature has where they have pushed out the money at the end of the year.
That is correct.
Just want to make that. Also, the capital fund, in order to do any, um... Asset protection in the district, we must have a capital fund, correct?
If we expect to be reimbursed by housing aid, yes, that is correct.
So, um... Sometimes, um... We don't always spend the amount of money we project that we're going to spend and I recall that, that something, the school committee makes a decision to roll over some of that extra cash from one fiscal year into the other and that goes into which fund?
Fund balance would be either committed or assigned. Um... You commit to capital projects, you assign to other...
So, we would assign any money that does not spend and lasts fiscal year to a capital or some other...
That's correct. Yes, we usually assign to capital projects.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm st... I'm baffled by the non-spendable. Can you explain that again?
Sure, a perfect example of that is the Culp Fund. Culp Fund was started with, I believe it was $100,000 and you're only allowed to spend the interest that it earns. We have many, um... Scholarship funds that work that way. People will invest 10,000, 5,000, whatever and we can only, um... Award the interest that's earned on it.
Oh, okay.
So, it's a, it's considered a permit fund because you can't spend the principal.
Oh, okay, but it says now we got 30, 40,000 dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So, all the scholarships...
That, that's exactly correct.
You know, you just said the Culp Fund has more.
But Culp Fund is not on our books.
So, we have on our books 35,000 dollars. Can't spend it because we're spending the in... You can only spend the interest.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
No, I just, um... People often say we have all this money laying around. And I'm glad that you're pointing out, first of all, that it isn't laying around, that it has a purpose, um... That it is assigned to a fund and, um... That it's critically important to maintain that capital fund, um... Balance because we're using it to roll over to continue the maintenance of these buildings and without that, we would be in a whole lot of trouble. And I, so when we go to joint finance and they say, "Well, you have money here and you have money there. Why don't you spend it?" Well, if we spend it, it's a one-shot deal and then we don't have it anymore. And so, maybe if we talk about the fact that we don't spend that because there's no way to recoup it the following year is... You know what I'm talking about where it's... I want to say it's negative financing, but that's not the word. It's, um... It's budgeting in the red. I, I mean, it's...
It's, it's budgeting in a structural deficit, which is not good accounting practice. However, um... By, by contributing to our capital projects fund, um... In essence, we are getting a return on that because our projects earn between 66 and 76% return from RIDE on every dollar, on every dollar that we put into our facilities.
On those, yes. But on the others, if we spend... If we're, if we're not given enough money and so we just take 500,000 out of our 2%, 2%, which is mandated by the school committee, there's no way to put that back in. Correct?
Further down the road, you would have to contribute to it to bring it back up to that 2% and 2% by school committee policy.
Well, that's my point. No, my point, John, is that it becomes a structural deficit and you can only draw from those lines for so long and then the lines don't exist. That's my point.
Can you go through the, um... Breakdown again? I was trying to take notes, you were kind of quick and I don't have the breakdown here. Eight hundred and seventy K, the 4.3, the... And then what makes up the 2.2 and the 2.4?
So, in the restricted fund balance, 870,000 is special revenue funds, non-major, and 4.3 million is capital projects. That totals 5.2 million.
Next one. 2.2 and 2.4.
Okay, so the committed fund balance is 119,000 that was committed from our FY '16 revenues over expenditures to meet the... And then there's the required reserve of 2% and 2%, which equals 2.1 million for a total of 2.2 million.
So, what's the 119, what's that committed to?
That was committed to capital projects.
So, it doesn't go in the capital project?
It hadn't at year end because this was as of June 30. It was transferred over, um... First week in July.
Of last year.
Mm-hmm. And then 800,000 a year for three years is committed to our OPEB liability, so we transfer that to a general fund.
get the reimbursement from housing aid from the state for things that we do, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted us to say that one more time.
Very good.
Is there a minimum required to have in the capital projects restricted fund in order to qualify for the 60% to 75% reimbursement?
It should match the total that we have in projects. So we currently have about $10 million in approved projects. We've allocated about $2 to $2.5 million each year based on the reimbursement that we'll be getting. We're committed to getting those projects completed in one fiscal year and using, again, the reimbursement in the next fiscal year to do another $2 million. So in five years, we'll get $10 million worth of improvements to our facilities without additional input from the taxpayers, basically.
And just as an add-on to Paul's comment, for those of you who don't know this, the building committee is made up of two council people from Warren, two council people from Bristol, two from the public, myself as the treasurer, and then Dr. Andre, yeah, I know, it's just, I don't know, Dr. Andre and Pauline. And so that's what makes up your building committee. It is separate and apart from the school committee, and it is required by the state.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, oh, thank you. I'm having trouble putting one thing into my own words, and when I can't do that, I probably don't really understand completely. Okay, complete the next step, the next statement, okay? The structural deficit is when...
You build a budget based on money that's a one-time deal. So to put it like in your, in the household terms, if you used your tax return to buy groceries, or you used your credit card to buy groceries, you wouldn't do that.
Tax return is a one-shot thing, you can't really make a budget out of that.
Right, exactly.
You can make a budget out of your income, which, to which you can now buy groceries because the income happens on a regular basis. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pauline.
Thank you, Pauline.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that there was a policy in our online, is there a policy that is going to need to be adjusted based on these changes?
That's something that I was speaking with our policy subcommittee chair, she's going to take a look at that and have a conversation with Pauline and Diane and check it out and if there are adjustments that need to be made, I'm sure she'll get that started so that they're compliant with everything we're supposed to do.
All right, and if it is on our list, there's a federal grant control, internal controls policy that we'll be bringing forward probably in a couple of months.
Thank you. Moving forward, we have, what, an action item on the personnel? So, and there's really nothing to read, Mr. O'Dell, other than that there's a superintendent's recommendation for personnel 2017-30. Can I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Saviano, seconded by Mr. McBride. Any discussion about the personnel? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it, we can go do our executive session. May I?